Recording in progress.
Alrighty, if we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance here. And after the pledge, if we could all please observe a moment of silence. In the last week, former Trenton mayor Bob Bovitz passed away along with former Parks and Rec, longtime volunteer Jack Barnes as well. So if we could observe a moment of silence after the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, I'll call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Von Kriks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Keba Watten.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Perucci.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And first item we've got here on the agenda is the minute approval of the June 2nd, 2025 regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any discussion on the minute approval? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Alright, we've got two presentations and proclamations tonight. First one we have here is from our DDA director, Angela Pacino. For the 2025 informational meeting number one, if we could have a motion to make this part of the regular meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let you take it away here, Angela. I think we lost the screen behind us.
Yep.
Oh, no. You know what, we might have to put it back on the mayor's.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can scroll. It's no problem. There we go. Alright, take it away, Angela.
So, this is our 2025 informational meeting. This is just to kind of go over what the Trenton DDA has been doing over the six months to inform the community as well as the city council. You can go to the next slide. So again, in background, this is required under the act. We are up with our agenda, our minutes, our budgets and all financials. This will kind of cover from about January to 2025 to May 2025. Go to the next one. We are at full 11 members. And all, none of the terms expire this year, so we should be all set. To the next slide. So to go over some of the programs, one thing I'd love to show, as you can kind of see with the pictures, we had our first grant, we finally got to award, they completed their project. It was 2674 West Jefferson. And you can kind of see the before and after. There was even some really pictures where you can really see the crack in the facade, and they were able to completely change it. It looks absolutely lovely, a new color coat, and we're really excited to be able to share to everyone about what the Trenton DDA is able to help with businesses in the facade, not just for businesses and helping with their buildings, but of course, improving the look of the downtown as well. In addition, we also have two other applicants that also got approved, and hopefully we'll be able to see their projects as well once they complete that within the summertime. We also have our Downtown Dollars program, another exciting thing. Within six months, we were able to add $5,000 into the local economy. And we have another deal coming up, actually just started today. It's our summer deal, just in time for the Trenton Summer Festival. It's our, when you buy $100 at Downtown Dollars, which are basically a gift card for all that some of the downtown businesses who are participating, you get an extra 50. So not only does it help the customers, because they get a little extra, it helps the businesses as well. We had two BOGO deals, one in December, and then one around Valentine's Day, both did very well. So we're very excited to continue this program and see where it leads and gain more merchants. We just gained two recently. And then, we didn't have any event sponsorships within the six-month period, unfortunately. So we have some future summer events to look forward to. The obvious one, obviously, is I'll start with the Trenton Summer Festival. And the Trenton DDA is actually going to be doing a downtown stamp rally. So basically, there will be nine businesses, and they'll have these nice little rubber stamps, you'll get a nice postcard, and you'll go into the businesses, get their stamps, it'll be a really cool design. And when you turn these in, depending how many businesses you went to, you get to go into a raffle to win almost up to $300 in downtown dollars. We'll have five winners, each with a hundred, but you can win multiple times. So obviously, the more businesses you go to, the better your chance of winning and more money you could possibly win. And this will be during the Trenton Summer Festival. A Trenton DDA will have a booth there where you can turn it in, and we'll do the drawing on the Monday following. The next event we have is the Taste of Downriver. This is from the Southern Wayne County Regional Chamber. They're made downtown Trenton, one of their locations this year, so very excited. We have some of our local eateries who are joining, so please keep that on your radar and join us downtown to enjoy some local foods. And then lastly, of course, is our Trenton Art Festival, which is going to be September 19th through 20th. We're going to be adding four more murals. They're going to be absolutely, very excited to share them. We'll have a sip and stroll again, as well as our art festival that was very well-liked by the community. So keep up with the updates, we'll have some information about the artists coming soon, as well as the locations. And so, just kind of go over some of our authority projects. Some of the ones we've always been kind of going on, the Elm parking lot, that is finishing up, should be done within the month, as we just finished up the landscaping and furnishings. Already got lots of great feedback from people who go to the farmer's market of how nice it is, so very excited once we get the furnishings, all the things wrapped up of that location. Rotary Park has also been making great progress, the boardwalk finally is getting done, we're hoping to see that as well progress, and a nice new space for hopefully future events for the downtown. So has the road rehabilitation has also roamed out, if you see, the roads are much nicer in the downtown. We're also working on our TIF and Development Plan, which is about to expire within the next five years. So this is the time the Trenton DDA is looking to future projects, what we want to do, how we want to plan that out. And then we have also our tree restorations. We'll kind of be doing that with the next one, which is the Streetscape Master Plan. We just recently applied for a grant for planning assistance with SEMCOG, so we're hoping to get that and really kind of take a look, what do we want the downtown to look like, and start planning for all the future projects we can do. And so, that kind of basically wraps up our six months in a nice, quick time. Our next informational meeting will be in December 2025 for the next six months.
Thank you, Angela. Any council have any questions here? Alright, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next we have here is a proclamation for a special birthday we've got coming up here. We've got a lot of folks in attendance for it. If we could get a motion from council to make this part of the regular meeting, moved and supported, so we're going to be able to celebrate Jack Sharkey Day in Trenton here very soon.
Yeah.
We'll have to read this off here. Whereas John "Jack" Sharkey, a Native American of the Chipewa Ottawa Tribe, was born in the town of St. Jacques on July 5th, 1925. Whereas Jack met the love of his life, Ruth Erickson, in the UP, they were married in November of 1946, and had seven children, Christine, Barb, Jackie, John, Tim, Paul, and Tom. Whereas Jack served in the United States Coast Guard during World War II, participating in D-Day on June 6th, 1944, and was on an LSD-327 landing ship tank that delivered troops and tanks to the shore. And whereas after the service, Jack worked as a lumberjack in the UP. Upon moving to Trenton, he got a job on the MAEDA, a coal carrier based out of the Trenton Edison Plant, where he worked his way up to first mate until she was retired. He then worked for E&amp;L, driving car carrier semi trucks, where he retired after 18 years. And whereas Jack was an avid hunter with both a bow and rifle, loved snowmobiling, and was an accomplished woodworker, he now enjoys word searches and feeding the birds on his front porch. Whereas Jack lost his wife Ruth in 2018, and in 2024, lost three sons and three brothers, Jack is survived by daughters Christine, Barb, and Jackie, along with his son Tim, and many grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And whereas Jack is an outstanding person, husband, father, veteran, mentor, and father-in-law, now therefore I, Stephen Rezepa, is mayor of the city of Trenton, do hereby proclaim July 5th, 2025, as Jack Sharkey Day in the city of Trenton, and most hearty wishes for a happy 100 birthday extended to him from all of our citizenry. So happy birthday, Mr. Sharkey. There you are, sir. Have a very happy birthday, and thank you very much for all you've done for us. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Of course. Happy birthday, and many more.
Jack, look over here, Jack.
We'd like to take a picture here for you.
One more, you've got a blinker. That's good.
Trust me, it's me that screwed that one up. Happy birthday, Mr. Sharkey. Thank you all for being here, too.
Yes, thank you guys for what you did.
Thank you, Debbie, for your extra work.
You're welcome.
Thank you all very, very much.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome.
We're not going to make everyone stay, don't worry. You guys can go home, that's fine. It's a good segue out time if you'd like to leave, so that is a-okay. Go celebrate somewhere, so.
That's awesome. It's great. Thank you, happy birthday.
Thank you all very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
He thanks everybody.
Oh, of course, we appreciate you all.
Yep.
See, there's Kane right there.
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
Alright, now we'll segue on into public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment we'll have for items that are on today's agenda, and we'll have another opportunity for all other comment later on in the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak could ask you to begin with your name and address, direct all questions through me, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Seeing none, we'll move right along here. Asking for this body's reappointment of Robert Watkowski to the Recreation Commission for a term expiring June 1 of 2028.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Keba Watten.
Yes.
Hornbeck.
Yes.
Perucci.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rezepa.
Obstand.
Von Kriks.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you all very much for your concurrence there. Next up, we have our 33rd District Court fines, costs, and fees for May of 2025. I will defer to our delegate, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to receive and place on file the fines, costs, fees, May 2025, submitted by the 33rd District Court, showing the city of Trenton receiving $4,778.76.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. So I'll actually turn this to you, Madam Clerk, for the next couple items here. First up being the DirecTV LLC Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement.
Okay. DirecTV is asking for renewal of the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement between the city of Trenton and DirecTV LLC for a period of 10 years, from June 16th, 2025 through June 16, 2035. This has been reviewed by our city attorney.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Next up, we have from Bill of Barr, the Turn the Town Teal.
Mr. Barr is again coming to us for the annual request to turn the town teal in the month of September, a national campaign to create awareness for ovarian cancer, and to tie ribbons in the city of Trenton for the month of September.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Saying no further discussions, unanimously so ordered. And then we also have from the St. Paul Lutheran Church, the Healthy Trenton 5K One Mile Run Walk.
Okay, thank you. This is also a annual request. St. Paul Lutheran Church is asking to hold the Healthy Trenton 5K One Mile Run Walk on Saturday, July 26th. The one-mile event will begin at 8:00 AM to approximately 8:25 AM, and the 5K event to begin at 8:30 AM to approximately 9:45 AM. And this would be under the direction of the police department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Seeing no further discussions, unanimously so ordered there. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Alright, we've got three items now from our city administrator here, Mr. Creach. First up being the geotechnical investigation of properties.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you, you have two separate contracts that we would like to move ahead with. These are with G2 Consulting, who's done a lot of work for us in the past. And this will involve core drilling the two sites that have been narrowed down for construction of our police and fire stations. So I'm asking for you to move to approve the proposals with G2 Consulting Group in the initial amount of $24,550 to perform geotechnical investigations for construction of the proposed fire station located within the northeast quadrant of West Road and Veterans Parkway, and the proposed police station located in the northeast quadrant of Maple and Forest Street, with the additional charges approved as contained in the proposals with the current concurrence of the city administrator and city engineer as needed. Funding will come from account 403-301-818-014 and 403-336-818-014.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you for your concurrence there. Next one we have here, the authorization to purchase property from the city of Trenton, VFW Post 1888.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you, you have a final resolution that will allow us to close on the property. As we have previously discussed, the purchase agreement is attached, and you will note that the purchase price is $650,000 for the VFW Post 1888. And we've agreed to handle or weave in all the associated closing costs. So the request is moved to approve Resolution 2025-14 authorizing the purchase of property from the city of Trenton, VFW Post 1888, in the amount of $650,000, and associated closing costs pursuant to the terms of the purchase agreement, and authorize the mayor or the mayors designated to execute all closing documents, take all actions necessary to complete the transaction, and that all such actions and execution of documents shall be subject to the final review and approval by the city attorney.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered again. Thank you all again for your concurrence there. Lastly, the authorization to purchase property from Hyroll Inc., DBA Trenton Motor Inn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you have a similar resolution, I will make one note here, because it's a little different than in your, in your online version. The purchase price was 1.25 million for the Trenton Motor Inn site. So the actual motion is moved to approve Resolution 2025-15 Authorization to Purchase Property from Hyroll Inc. Doing Business as Trenton Motor Inn, in the amount of $1,250,000 and associated closing costs pursuant to the terms of the purchase agreement, authorize the mayor or mayors designated to execute all closing documents, and take all necessary, take all actions necessary to complete the transaction, and that all such actions and execution of documents shall be subject to final review and approval of this, by the city attorney.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Oh, Councilwoman Von Kriks.
Yeah, I just want to commend you, Dean, for the job that you've done securing these properties. It was a lot of work, a lot of negotiations, a lot of thought went into it.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank you for all your hard work here in your administration for securing these properties and, you know, putting Trenton into the future for the next 50 to 100 years, I think it'll be great.
Thank you.
Just wanted to give you the accolades there.
I appreciate it. Just one thing for note, too, in case anybody asks, we're probably going to be able to do the final closing on Trenton Motor Inn. We're hoping to do that by mid-July, once all the title stuff and everything is done. And then, the VFW is going to do an end-of-summer kind of going-away-party type of thing. And so, probably shortly after Labor Day, we'll, we'll close on that property. But we're, by approval of the G2 consulting contracts, everything will be moving, moving along quite well.
I also would like to say thank you all for the hard work that you all did, and I expressed that to you earlier this evening, and also in regards to staying under budget with both purchases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean. Alright, next up from our controller, Budget Amendments for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2025.
Yes, good evening. So as we wrap up our fiscal year here, I'm required to make the, the June 30th budget amendments prior to the end of the fiscal year. So there's quite a few, just as we're going department by department, make sure nobody's over budget, and reallocating certain things that didn't get spent to other places, so I'm just looking for a motion to approve the budget amendments as of June 30th, 2025.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you so much.
Alright, we've got two items from our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent here. First up to being the request to replace the roof on the DPS salt storage barn.
Thank you, Mayor. The DPS has a road salt storage barn that was constructed 22 years ago. The original roof is in need of replacement as a recent windstorm caused numerous shingles to tear away. Three quotes were obtained, with Magnum Construction providing the lowest cost. They quoted a 30-year dimensional shingle with a 20-year labor warranty. Therefore, I'm requesting authorization for Magnum Construction to replace the salt barn, roof, in the amount of $14,800. This will be funded from the municipal building improvement bond.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Next up, we've got the request to purchase pickup trucks.
The DPW's fleet of pickup trucks are in need of replacement. These vehicles serve as our frontline plow trucks, therefore the boxes and underbodies are rusting out rapidly. These trucks range in age from 10 to 14 years old. We would be replacing seven maintenance trucks, one supervisor truck, and the director's truck. A quote was obtained from Gornall Ford, which reflects my deal pricing. These trucks will be outfitted with new plow packages, safety light bars, headache racks, and bed liners. We would be financing these vehicles for five years, and have budgeted the associated finance payments across four departments, which are Parks and Facilities, DPW, Local Streets, and the Water Fund. After the initial five years of payments, it would be our intention to budget the same amount for years six through 10 as a vehicle replacement plan. Therefore, I'm requesting to purchase two 2025 F-250s, six 2026 F-250s, and one 2025 F-150 from Gornall Ford in the amount of $529,525, and further request to surplus the unneeded vehicles at a future auction sale.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion?
Thank you so much for taking my call earlier today. I really appreciate it. I was just wondering if you could just go a little bit further into what the goal is in regards to what the future funding would be like.
Yeah, so I mean, we typically get about 10 years out of these trucks. Unfortunately, they were all purchased at one time back then, prior to me taking this job. But going forward, I mean, we'd have five years of finance payments, and then we would budget the same amount, year six through 10. And that way, at year 10, when these trucks are due to be replaced, we'll have the funds to, to buy them outright.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Alright, we've got two items again from our DDA Director, Ms. Pacino here. First up being the approval of the mural installation on the Trenton Village Theater parking lot wall.
Thank you. So unless I need to go through the whole resolution, I'll just do us a favor and summarize it. This was actually approved ahead of time through the application with Councilwoman Hornbeck, and I've been working with the DIA, and they decided to move forward with the Trenton Village Theater to put a mural on the parking lot side wall. To continue, they need an official resolution with the city council. I had the city attorney, create one for us, attaches also the MOU to see our agreement. This is fully funded by the DIA, and the only thing they need us is to set the committee to pick the art. The committee will be with the city, and also to make sure die-pack, since they are the long-term residents of that building, to make sure they're involved as well. And all we have to do is create a nice announcement, and the DIA will be able to put a sign on the wall stating that, you know, that they funded this initiative. So all I need is a motion to approve the resolution.
Moved and supported. Approve the resolution here. Councilman Perucci?
As always, I'm assuming the DDA and/or city will have input on what actually is the final rendering on that wall?
Yep, there'll be a committee with a workout who would do, and die-pack as well, because we, obviously, we don't want any.
Yeah, understood.
So, yep. So there will be a committee to go through, approve the sketches, approve the artists, make sure it's what the city wants.
Thank you.
Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Angela. Next up, the business improvement grant for 2515 West Jefferson.
Yep, so we were able to receive another application for 2515 West Jefferson Avenue. They actually applied for one grant at a time, just for lighting and awning, that was under $3,000. But once they discovered that the faux brick would not be able to stain that awning and the lighting, they were able to apply for a second grant. We do allow property owners to apply for up to $50,000 within five years, so she was able to do that. This is a second grant. The total came to about $8,924.03. If you can go ahead and look through the application, instead of the faux brick, they're going to put white paneling with the nice black trim, and have awnings and lighting. right on the building. Like before, this will be a reimbursement, so they will have to continue to be eligible, make sure they're up with their taxes, go to the building department, make sure everything's up to code, and make sure they follow all the afterward paperwork. And once we do the final inspection, they will be reimbursed the amount. This comes from our renovation incentive account, and today I'm asking you guys to approve the business improvement grant for 2515 West Jefferson Avenue in the amount of $8,924.03.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported for approval of the business improvement grant. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Angela. All right, we've got two items now from our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Beaker, the first being the 2025 Festival Beverage Operator.
Thank you, Mayor. As we're getting excited for two weeks away from our festival, the Trenton Summer Festival Committee sent a request for proposals to eligible Trenton civic organizations to operate the beverage tent at this year's festival. Proposals are sent to Trenton Band Boosters, Trenton Touchdown Club, Trenton Hockey Association, Trenton Firefighter Charities, Trenton Rotary Club, St. Joseph Athletic Club, and Trenton Baseball Association. Proposals were received from St. Joe's Athletic Club, Trenton Baseball slash Trenton Youth Football Association, as they're working together, and Trenton Firefighter Charities. The proposals were reviewed by the committee with the set criteria, and based on the proposal evaluation, the committee has voted to award the 2025 beverage vendor to be the Trenton Baseball and Trenton Youth Football Association for this year. So we're looking for your approval.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Tim. Then we've got the Kennedy Recreation Center Elevator Repair.
All right. So the Kennedy Recreation Center elevator was inspected and is inspected and maintained by Otis Elevator Company. After a recent inspection, it was found that the solid state starter, try and say that 10 times fast, is failing. This piece is now obsolete as it is over 25 years old and needs to be replaced. The elevator is the only means of access to the second floor for anyone with additional accessibility needs. Otis has quoted the repair under our current service contract in the amount of $11,911.53. The elevator is currently operational but has to be restarted a few times and may not restart at any point in time. Work would be accomplished in July of 2025. Your appreciation or your approval is appreciated.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Tim. All right, we do have a late item tonight, and I'll bring Angelia back up here. We've got the Legacy Restoration Project for the 2025 Trenton Village Theater seating.
Thank you. If you can remember a little back, Dr. Noel Jackson was here and discussed about the Legacy Restoration Project, which is to basically restore the seating at the Trenton Village Theater. They were looking for sponsors for this project. The total cost of the project was about to be $170,000. The Trenton DDA approved to be a $25,000 sponsor on April 3rd, and once DIPAC has achieved $100,000 funds, the Trenton DDA would consider an additional $25,000. So on June 12th, DIPAC was able to provide proof of additional funds and sponsors, and the Trenton DDA voted in a five-to-three vote, passing the motion to approve the additional $25,000. So in total, the Trenton DDA will be sponsoring $50,000 for the legacy project. This will be coming from our renovation incentive. More info about the project is attached. Today I'm asking you to approve the $50,000 sponsorship for the Down River Youth Performing Arts Center for the Legacy Restoration Project, Trenton Village Theater seating.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Peruzzi?
Yes, I want to take an item from the study session and take it off the...
Oh, okay.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm just letting him know.
Oh, yeah, we'll do that immediately after this one. Yeah, I'll kick it back to you. Thank you. But so just on the seating portion, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. We'll have you hang out just for a second, Angelia, and then Councilman, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to take off the table the previous study session discussing the digital sign for the Elm parking space.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported to remove that item from the table. Any further discussion on that? Okay, so items removed from the table, and then if anyone wanted to make a motion on, based on the study session results?
So I'll make a motion to, based on the study session, to go with the option of the non-digitalized sign as presented for approximately $12,000. I don't have the exact number.
Concur with the DDA recommendations.
Yes, yep. That sounds much more effective, yes.
Okay. Now, it's easier to have it. So we've got a motion there. Do we have support?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, any further discussion on this sign? All right, seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angelia. All right, thank you, Councilman. Okay, we've got, I don't have any other late items here, so our disbursements and statements in our reports, I will defer to our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to approve the authorized disbursement June 16, 2025 in the amount of $1,138,658.20.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Moved, received, and placed on file the financial summary May 31, 2025. Schedule of Investment Cash on Hand, May 31, 2025. City Beautiful Commission Minutes, May 7, 2025. Civic Commission Minutes, May 5, 2025. Fire and Police Pension Board Draft Meeting Minutes, May 21, 2025. Historical Commission Minutes, April 4, 2025, and May 12, 2025. And the Fire Department Monthly Budget or Monthly Report, May 2025.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I forgot the Police Department Monthly Report, 2025.
Oh, okay. Moved to approve that one as well, then. Support. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Right, other council business now, just very briefly on my end, for folks that might be watching, may not have seen it on the website or on social media or anything. Just late last week, you probably noticed some orange barrels in the area on Harrison over the Frankenpoet Drainer Bridge there. Just so everyone's aware that we do inspect the bridges that we have, they're city-owned, like there on Harrison, on Marion, et cetera. And there were some deficiencies found in this most recent inspection, and so our engineers working on the specs to make sure that we can get those repairs done as soon as possible. But still two-way traffic going on each of those sides right now, but just no need to be alarmed, but those barrels might be out there just until we can make sure things are all secured. So just so folks are aware, and then we'll keep everyone posted on that. And other than that, we'll be having a study session right after this meeting here as well to do, give some updates. Dean will be giving everyone on the non-police and fire building portion of the bond updates there. So that's all I've got right now, and we will get started with Councilwoman Hornbeck.
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Peruzzi?
I'd just like to say good luck, Tim. I'm sure you're going to be busy. And also like to wish my wife a happy anniversary and a happy birthday.
Happy anniversary and birthday, ladies, too.
Not on the same day, are they?
Nope.
Okay.
Not that lucky.
It would be more cost-effective for me, but no.
Two separate sets of guests, right? All right, Councilman Cabalwatt.
Yeah, Mayor, you know, I'd also like to thank Dean and everybody in the administration for all the hard work they've done so far on this building work, the police station, the fire station, DPDW, all their city buildings. It's greatly needed, and it's an exciting time to be here and to be in Trenton, and just I can't wait to see the end results. But I know it's been some big, heavy lifts on acquiring property and the negotiations. And so, Dean, thank you to you and everybody that's been involved in every step so far along the way. Also, I'd like to remind residents that the Household Hazardous Waste Collection for Wayne County is having another one. It is Saturday, June 28th. It'll be in Dearborn, I think it's at Henry Ford, Henry Ford, Kevin Sargent gave me the thumbs up. It's at Henry Ford Community College. So it's a great event. That's, you know, it's a great time to get rid of all that ethyl-methyl bad stuff that's in our garages. Don't throw it away in your trash. Don't throw it. That's not the place for it. Take it, have it disposed of properly. There's a lot of things that can happen when you just throw it away in the trash. Yes, it's convenient for you, but it can cause fires in the trucks. It just, it's not the proper way to dispose of that material. So please send that over to the Household Hazardous Waste Collection event. That's why the county puts it on. Please take advantage of it. And also, Mayor, I'd like to thank, you know, everyone on council and here in the room. Last year, about this time, we went through a kind of a tough thing in our family, and y'all supported us big time. And I'd like to say a year later, my wife's doing great. And so this is kind of a, June 11th is a special time for our family, because we've got her. And so she's doing great, and, you know, the support we received over the last year has been just phenomenal. So thank you very much. That's all I have. That's all I have to add. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that. It was very great to hear. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I do not have anything this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Bunckrooks?
Yeah, just a few things here, quick. I'd just like to say my condolences to the family of Bob Bovitz, our former mayor. What a great man he was. 93 years old, a great public servant in this community. And not only was he a mayor, but he was very involved, and he was a deacon in the church. And he owns this Bovitz CPA firm over on King Road, and he's always owned a Trenton business, and his son has, you know, passed it down to his son now. But I've always used their services the 45 years I've been in business. And it's just a great family and, you know, a little loss for their family, a loss for Trenton. And he's just a great man. I wanted to say our condolences as a city to all that his father has done for this community, because he's done a lot. But, you know, he's kind of been out of the picture for a little while yet. But just wanted to let, you know, the residents know, and, you know, we'll miss him. And also, a couple of little things for the DPDW, DPS. Kevin, the grass, I was driving around Trenton, as I always do every weekend, and the grass over on Riverside Drive, have you been aware of what's going on over there next to the pier condos on the water side? Grass is getting really, really, really deep, and a couple of residents were on their porch. I just stopped to say hello, and they said, is there anything you can get done to get this grass cut? Because we've seen two rats come out their way, and they're really concerned about it. So is there some way we can get that cut or get over there and get the owners to cut it, or?
I can check with ordinance.
Okay, that would be great, because they asked me to check into it. And also, driving home every night, you know, they paved Fourth Street, and it looks great, and asphalt's nice, you know, as they push that asphalt into our side streets coming off of Fourth Street. Didn't look so good at first, but it's not too bad now. But anyway, on the corner of Marion and Fourth Street, there's that triangle, that cement triangle. It always looks terrible. It's always broken up. It needs work. It's never looked good the 30, 40 years I've lived over there. And it's got a lot of gravel that's breaking up. It's always in the street. Is there anything that we can do to make that look better as we're coming into our neighborhoods? It just kind of looks terrible all the time. It's right in front of that new party store, and you know exactly where I'm talking about, it's that triangle there, and it just, just looks awful. And I've had people comment to me about it, and I see it every day because I drive that way. But maybe there's something we could do to spruce that up a little bit. Yeah, I don't know if there's any plantings we could do or anything that would look, you know, more aesthetically beautiful, that it doesn't overgrow, so you can't see how to get onto Fourth Street. But is there anything else we could do, in other words, with that section besides what's there now? Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you so much, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Kevin. Councilman Benedetti?
No, Mayor, I'm off.
All right. Madam Clerk, do you have anything tonight?
I'll just mention that City Hall will be closed this Thursday, June 19th, in honor of Juneteenth. The next regular council meeting will be on Monday, July 7th at 7:00 PM.
All right, thank you. I don't think I have anyone from assessing here. Treasure, Amanda? All right, cool. Doesn't seem like either. Nothing from the Treasury Department. Any of our department heads have anything?
Of course, Tim. It's summertime. Tim's always up there.
I got something. Pool might be open, huh?
Well, not so good news to start, but I did want to say I appreciated the moment of silence, and I know that Debbie Barnes did as well for her husband, Jack. Debbie has been an employee or a volunteer for the city for over 60 years, and Jack has been by her side volunteering ever since. So that family means a great deal to us, and we greatly appreciate that. On better news, we do have the Summer Festival coming up in two weeks, so July 27th, 28th, 29th. The fireworks will be on the 28th at 10:00 PM. Be at West Road and the river. So the barge will be out there in the middle of the water, and we're looking forward to the great entertainment, fun times, and some phenomenal weather. So we hope you all join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim.
Yes, sir.
Oh, we have a question.
And the rainout date is? The rainout date will be Sunday evening. Thank you. We don't have to worry about that, though. Oh, yeah, you haven't been to the festival before.
Chief Hawkins?
Well, I wanted to follow, Tim. So on the heels of that, for the street fair, this year, slight difference in some of the closures. We will post something on all our social media and through our app later this week. But the gist of it is, with everything that we've seen go on across the country with security at large events and festivals, we are going to make a hard closure of the street fair. It's not going to be the water-filled barricades that have no water in them that can be moved. We are going to have a hard closure with cement barricades and some other things that we borrowed from other communities. There may be a little difference to some of the businesses downtown. There will not be access to some of those driveways. There will be no vehicular traffic in any of the festival area. Also, the fireworks will be off, obviously, at West, in West Jeff area. The viewing area is inside the secure festival area. We're not using the Rotary Park. This will be the first time that we've left Riverside Drive open, so those residents down there may be happy to know, and they have a lot of parties, that they'll be able to access Riverside Drive and the condos the entire time because the secure area is inside the festival area. So we'll have something posted and out next week. Business owners and residents have already received a letter, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right, any other department heads? Not seeing any. We will go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address. Let me your comment to five minutes. Direct all questions through me. Not seeing any. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:43 PM. Moved and supported. Don't go anywhere. We're going to start the study session right now.